Went on for an hour or two, so that slowed us down, but we are now just about ready to start. I see Mr. Parks and we'll now call this meeting to order.
Either one, sir. Sir, wherever you prefer, I can move him.
And if we can start with item number one.
Item number one, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Ms. Suzanne D. Manrique as to the Quality and Productivity Commission for the term ending April 4, 2014.
If you'd like to say anything you'd like, and then we'll ask you a few questions.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I've enjoyed my tenure on the Quality and Productivity Commission thus far. It's been a little challenging as the years progress because we went from portions of three staff persons to no staff, but the commission has quite ably stepped up to the plate and have do many things on a volunteer basis. There are some things that we're still trying to work out because it really does require steady staff, but I feel that in the, this year especially, that we've sort of repurposed ourselves and have become much more involved. Used to be that we were just about the awards program each year and a few other things on the side, but now we had an opportunity to really review many of the audits. The Controller's Office has been wonderful about helping us get through some of those, and I think I see that the coming year will be a much more active time for the commission. Again, we still have the challenges of the staffing, but I feel that there's a good commitment on the part of the other commissioners, and I feel pleased to be a member of that body.
What do you view the primary role of the commission as currently?
I think our role, before the idea, my understanding when I first joined the commission, was that we were there to sort of motivate the city departments through the awards program to look for effective cost-cutting measures and to be a citizens' review body to kind of see what was going on and be involved in the awards process. But now, as the, as my time there has evolved, there's been much more interest in looking at some of the audits and seeing how we can be helpful, not to be punitive toward the departments, but to be, how can we be helpful in addressing some of the issues where some of the audit recommendations have been addressed and in some cases not. And now with the challenge, I work for the county and I know about the challenge of the budget, seeing how we can work with them and sort of bring some of the issues to light and see how we can assist them, as I said, in a constructive way.
And what skills do you think you bring to the table in helping the commission move towards these goals?
Well, I work for one of the county supervisors, and a lot of what we do involves interaction with the departments. The department budgets become involved, the entire county budget gets involved in a lot of the decisions and planning that is made, and I think that I'm able to bring to bear a lot of that daily experience. I work for the supervisor in portions of the city of LA that she represents, as well as some unincorporated areas. We are the main line of services. So I think I've gained, over the nine years I've worked there, I've gained a good sense of understanding of what's involved in departments trying to do things with rapidly reducing resources, but also I've seen some very effective teamwork at the county level and the city level. So I feel I'm able to bridge the two entities.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, any questions?
Thank you for putting yourself forward. It's been great to see you, the product of your work.
Thank you.
We appreciate your good work to date and look forward to you being reappointed and continue to have you and the commission work on improving efficiencies for the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, if we could hear items two through six together as a group.
Very, very good. If you'd indulge me, item two, City Controller Report relative to the fiscal year 2009, 2010 Audit Planning Letter from Simpson and Simpson, the city's external auditor. Item three, City Controller Report relative to the Engagement Letter between the city and Simpson and Simpson, the city's external auditor. Item number four, City Controller Report relative to Auditor Communications from Simpson and Simpson. Item number five, City Controller Report relative to Fiscal Year 2008, 2009 Municipal Improvement Corporation Financial Statements and Management Discussion and Financial Report. And lastly, item number six, City Controller Report relative to the Fiscal Year 2008, 2009 Audit Observations and Recommendations Report.
If we could have all the appropriate folks, any and all, come up to discuss this.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Lamb from the Controller. I'm here on item number two primarily, along with Brainard Simpson, who is the managing partner with our external CPA Simpson and Simpson. Under current AICPA, American Institute of Certified Public Accountants and Governmental Accounting Office Audit Standards, the auditor has to inform you of various aspects of the audit, and you have other items on the agenda reflecting that. One of those items is the Planning Letter, and in laying out the Planning Letter, there were two major concerns that the Controller shares. The first concern is the issue of going concern, primarily of the general fund because of budgetary issues that are facing the city. Under both auditing standards which apply to the auditor and under government accounting standards issued by the Government Accounting Standards Board, we have to look at the issue of going concern, which is after the, after June 30th, is it likely, are there issues that could be facing the city in the next year, 15 months, which would raise substantial question about the city's ability to continue its going concern? Again, what we're looking at here is the general fund, not the city in general. Issues such as revenue, issues bringing the budget in line with revenue, making sure that our budgetary expenditures are appropriate, the status of the reserve fund, the status of bond rating agencies, the status of staffing are all issues that we're going to be looking at. And frankly, one of the issues that we had last year is that our financial statements last year were what is called dual-dated. The second date was later because of the downgrading by one of the credit rating agencies on our debt because of issues facing the city. So we have to, as does the city, looking at that. The other issue that is facing the city, and again, primarily the general fund, is staffing issues. In the last year, we've had the 2,400 E-RIP. We've been moving people out of the general fund into special purpose funds. We have had managed hiring, all of which affects the accountant and the related classifications in the city, which in turn affects both the ability of the Controller to prepare financial statement information, but also the ability of the auditor to audit that information, particularly when it requires responses to questions from departments. We had that problem last year, and as a result, our financial statements were delayed until the end of February. Going into this year, we're concerned that we don't have much flexibility in terms of delay because under the single audit, which includes the city's financial statements, that has to be completed and filed with the Bureau of the Census by the end of March. So we're looking at issues that are facing the city. Now, Mr. Simpson is the engagement partner of Simpson and Simpson. May also have some concerns that he wants to communicate.
I think that Bill has adequately stated the major concerns that we have with respect to the audit that we're conducting this year. The single audit is one of the most significant concerns we have because if that audit is not completed by March 31st, you would be a non-compliance. And non-compliance could have a significant impact on your federal funding. The, what would delay that audit would be the resources within the Controller's Department. We have some serious concerns as it relates to that, whether that the staff that is available would be able to provide the documentation that we need timely in order to get that audit report out. We certainly will keep management informed as that audit progresses. The other concern has to do with just the ability to get your CAFRA audit out on a timely basis. We really don't know what we're going to run into as it relates to getting the documentation that we're going to be needing from the various departments and the various staff in order to complete the audit timely. Last year, we didn't complete the audit until the end of February, which was two months later than we normally complete the audit. And the resources has been reduced even further than last year. So we anticipate that that audit will be later than February. So I think those are the major concerns that we have. The next concern we have is the impact of the lack of those resources on your internal control procedures and processes. If there are not adequate controls, adequate segregation of duties, there could be some material weaknesses that will require alternative auditing procedures or significant deficiencies in the control that may require staff to spend extra time in just making sure that those deficiencies does not result in errors in the financial statements. So as a result of those issues, those are the concerns that we have relative to the audit for this year.
And what specifically happens to us if we're substantially late on performing these audits on time? What kind of penalties do we face and from where?
Well, with respect to the single audit, it could affect your level of funding. In other words, the feds would have some concern with respect to continuing funding if they have not received the single audit on a timely basis. So it could have a significant effect on your level of funding from the federal grants and contracts that you receive. With respect to your CAFRA, if that's not delivered timely to the external stakeholders, the bondholders and what have you, would have some concerns with respect to the city's ability to get those statements out timely, and it could have an impact on your ability to raise working capital and the cost of that working capital.
All that sounds pretty counterproductive. What can we do proactively to prevent that from happening?
Well, I think that we would need to identify resources to assist the city into providing the documentation and the audit support that is necessary in order to meet those timetables.
I think at a minimum, and I'm sure this will be a much longer conversation, but can we ask you to come back to us with some information on how short you are in terms of staffing and funding and what you actually might need so we can look at whether we can address this or not?
I think that the Controller has been working on preparing something for the council that talks about, in general, the general fund and the relationship of the general fund to various departments. For example, one of the issues that we've got going right now is that the treasurer, without a chief accountant, was delayed in providing information that goes into the financial statements. Since the airports, harbor, and water and power have their investments with the treasury, they need the same information. And so that over the years, what we've developed is the treasurer provides us the information, we put it into the appropriate schedules, Simpson and Simpson audits it, and then the auditors for the proprietary departments review Simpson and Simpson's work papers. That means that the treasurer isn't doing various schedules for departments, and they don't have four sets of auditors coming in reviewing the work. But this year, we're not going to have that information at this point until the middle of February, which is going to have a delay, the financial statements for airports, harbor, and EWP, which in turn affects a delay on the city's financial statements because where they have the option of producing standalone financial statements, we have to produce financial statements that encompasses everybody, including the elements of the pension systems and the CRA. So it's how this whole thing works together. The other thing we're looking at is, the other issue we've got going right now is we're installing a new financial system. So at the same time, we are working on financial reporting, accounting issues, we're also diverting people to work on the new financial system because my view is that we're not going to get another $8 million next year to extend out the implementation of FMS. We're going to go on July 1 of 2011, which means that everybody's got to be ready. So we're looking at the effects of the reduction of senior staff. We're looking at transferring people to special purpose funds. We're looking at a new financial system, and we're looking at all the other stuff we do. And so we're trying to come to grips with how do we effectively deal with this, given the fact that at one of the meetings that Mr. Parks attended on the POC indicated basically there is no more money. We've got what we've got. And the question becomes, how do we live within that? How do we maximize that? Because, you know, we're not hiring accountants from outside the city. We're moving people around within the city. We've got the managed hiring process. So there are a number of issues that frankly, we have never faced before.
Yeah, when I'm trying to get at, because I'm not familiar enough with this process, are there things that will be delayed enough that will actually cost us money so that by trying to save money and being as tight as we are, we actually wind up costing ourselves more money? That's what I'm trying to get a sense of.
That is possible. The single audit is act of Congress. And so there are sanctions that if we don't have the single audit on time, that the federal government can take. Now, they can review from letters of concern from funding agencies all the way up to withholding of federal funds. And the question is, is it likely that they would do that? The single audit is both the city's financial statements as well as the grant funds. So if we don't have the city's financial statements, we don't have a single audit. With respect to debt, you know, the state of California has issued debt in very unfavorable circumstances. We could probably do the same thing, but the question is, what is the cost of the issuance of the debt? So there are a number of issues out there. There are a lot of possibilities, but we don't have the answer definitively. You know, when the thought is that, a lot of people have, is that the feds would not deny money to the city of Los Angeles. But in the most recent round of race-to-the-top education, the thought was the state of California was going to get one of the 10, and the state of California did not. So whether or not the federal agencies individually with whole federal funds, I don't know. I also don't know how it would impact ARA, which is based upon an accountability and a transparency and what, and concern by federal agencies that the current process is not as quick as it should be. So if we were to delay beyond that, I don't know if there would be a financial impact there.
Do we have a way to ask folks in various federal levels whether that would be the case, or would we be flagging our difficulties more than we need to? Because if we could get a handle on that, that would certainly be helpful.
Well, in the past, there has been a provision in the single audit to ask for extensions. However, both the GAO and the OMB have instructed federal agencies not to grant any extensions to the single audit. And the determination of funding would be to each individual federal agency, and we deal with about 14 different federal agencies. Plus, in the case of a lot of the money that we get is passed through the state of California, we also have to deal with the state. And frankly, the state is more wacko than the feds.
And probably in some ways broker, because they can't print money when they're short. What's the general objective of your audit? Why do you do it for the public that may be listening or following it? Why do you do it? What are you trying to get at?
Well, the, under the charter, the charter provides that the council will have a audit conducted annually. And really, the auditor works for the council and this committee. The goal is to provide materially correct financial information on the fiscal condition of the city. We prepare the various schedules in compliance with standards issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. The auditors audit that information in accordance with both AICPA and GAO standards, basically to provide information as to whether or not the financial statements of the city reflect the actual activities of the city. And one of the key things to look for is the auditor's opinion, and the opinion on it, and the key is whether or not they say that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material aspects. And that's what we have. In addition to that, the governmental, the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, has an annual certificate program for excellence in financial reporting. We have received the excellence in financial reporting for 14 straight years. Now, that's the financial statement audit. The single audit is required by the Congress, and the reason for that is that they had concerns about the quality of audit work done on federal grants and federal programs. So back in the middle 1980s, they adopted the single audit. Both the GAO and OMB have issued regulations that apply to the auditors to, with respect to the quality of the audits that are performed, to provide assurance to the federal agencies and others that we are, we have adequate controls, adequate compliance with federal laws and regulations in the spending of federal funds.
And do we make much use of this audit internally? What do we use it for? And what, could we take advantage of it better than we typically do?
Well, we prepare it in the Controller, so we're well aware of it. The CAO is involved in the process, and it is submitted to the committee. There are, one of the downsides of what we put together is it's so voluminous that the entire nature of the city is there. It talks about the three pension systems. It provides the unfunded liability. It provides information on the city's contribution. We also have information on the city's infrastructure, on depreciation of assets, on accounts receivable, on note disclosure as it affects the three proprietary departments, information on the CRA. It's probably the single best source of financial information on the city.
Mr. Parks, do you have some questions?
Mr. Simpson, you mentioned earlier that there were two types of audits. One was the comprehensive financial, no, the comprehensive financial statements of the city, which we call the CAFRA. The CAFRA, that's a synonym, please. C-A-F-R.
Oh, CAFRA.
Yeah, CAFRA, yes.
I didn't understand. That's the financial statement.
That's the financial, that includes the city and all of the proprietary departments and the various pension plans and CRA, all of the city activities in the CAFRA. Then we have the single audit. Yes.
That is used for our bond rating and our, in the sense of how we manage our debt so people know what our financial stability is.
Yes. And then you have the single audit, which is an audit of all of your federal programs. And within the single audit, the CAFRA audit is also included in that document to the feds. And that audit cannot be completed until the CAFRA is completed.
And your dilemma is that the city staff has not, is not sufficient of people to provide you the information for you to do the two audits.
Timely, yes.
And what was the significance of the date that you mentioned?
March 31st is the deadline to submit the single audit.
So that's where the federal government's making decisions about formula grants or block grants and things of that nature.
Yes.
You know, one thing, let me ask you, you know, great to see, I was looking at my paper and I heard your voice. I thought it was coming from heaven.
Or the other place.
Let me ask you, on the one audit that deals with MICA, one of the things, is it their charge when they do particularly a MICA audit, in addition to telling us whether we're within the level and things of that nature, to make some assessment as to whether we are spending debt as we've gotten in balance between perishable items and bricks and mortar? Is that one of their roles, to talk about how we create debt and what we created for? Or are they just looking at it from the sterile view of how much you borrow and what the other capacity to pay for and things of that nature?
They're looking at it from the financial standpoint. If we borrow, how much we paid for? Do we have internal controls that, over that, is there authorization to issue the debt? Is there authorization to make the debt service payments?
No, they don't make any judgments as to how.
Yeah, that would be a management audit or a performance audit as opposed to a financial statement audit.
Would that be something that the Controller would be doing? Or is that something that we'd have to ask to be done?
I think that would have to be something that would go to Ms. Gruel as the Controller.
Now, how does the whole issue of the, when we talk about the single audit and others, the whole cap rate issue, how does that fit into this group of audits?
As part of the single audit, one of the things that the auditor has to look at is the application of the cap rate to the departments. Now, we have the cap, the preparation of the cap audited because when we, when we started with our former cognizant agency, the Department of Labor, they wanted it audited as a mechanism in part to ease the negotiation and ease the time that it takes the federal agencies to review. And so that has worked very well. Part of the issue that we have right now, for example, with the feds is since we're applying it to federal funds, and our current cognizant agency is HUD. HUD does not do cost allocation plans, so they contract with HHS to review the city's cost allocation, but HHS won't do any review until they have a contract with HUD. HUD won't do the contract until they make sure they have enough money to pay for it. So it's an interesting dynamic.
And then also, when you mentioned earlier about FMS, how, is, does that fit into the whole equation of being able to provide better information and more timely?
Yes.
So that's the key point of having this electronic system versus all these paper and pencil systems, department by department?
Well, the current system is an electronic system. What won't change is that the city is a series of separate industries, and it's how you get to the payment process that is the accounting issue. the accounting issue. What will help is that one of the goals is to put all departments on cost accounting, so that we can actually tie expenditures to sources of funding, so that we will know much better, much more specificity during the year, where we are with respect to the General Fund, where we are with respect to special purpose funds, which has been an ongoing issue.
How does that roll into the whole additional facet of the account receivables? Is that another issue that assistance for us to get that information?
A part of accounts receivable is, for example, we have certain receivables now in FMIS. Those will be rolled into FMS. There are certain, mainly manual processes with limited computer capabilities that will be rolled into FMS on July 1 of 2011. The other systems are part of the ARS that the Council just approved, the Contract Amendment, that will be rolled into Phase 2. And we're looking at some time in September or October. Part of the process that we're also engaged in is cleaning up the accounts receivable. Over the last couple of years, we have cleaned up about $300 million of receivables that departments had that were either not collectible or outside the statute of limitations. And so we're cleaning up the receivables because the receivable information going into a computerized financial system, that the perspective is that we're only going to do it with information that is accurate and reliable. If we bring in information that is not, we end up with a problem with our auditors, either some sort of material weakness or some sort of qualified opinion in the worst case. So we're working to clean it up and to bring it in so that we also have a much better idea of what is realistically collectible.
Let me ask, Chris, we have heard three items. It's been in Budget and Finance that deals with account receivable. But we also have a joint jurisdiction with audits, and we're holding those items until audits looks at them. And we'd like to see if we can give you those CF numbers, either schedule them here or if we can get them waived, if we can move that whole package to the Council. And the three of them, they're almost simultaneously as 10-1155, and then the second one is S1, and the third one's S2. So if there's any way that we can pull those together, we can get them all. It's very fundamentally important for the system and the account receivable area.
I don't know. Should we do it in a joint meeting?
The thing is, we've already heard them in Budget. So the issue, we're just holding what the Budget Committee had done until we see what the audit really is going to be.
I don't know if there's, do you have any sense of whether we'd miss anything by holding a separate audit meeting?
Let me talk to your staff about that.
Okay.
Maybe with money.
Okay, unless there's some overriding reason why not, we'll try our best to do that and get back to you soon.
We're trying to put all these things into one master number, so we can not be chasing multiple CF numbers.
Couple other questions. I know in the auditor communication, which is item number four, you noted there are some areas that are particularly sensitive because there's a possibility that future events will affect them significantly, and our assumptions may or may not be reasonable. There are assumptions about everything from litigation liabilities to pollution remediation obligations, all kinds of things. Could you explain these issues and the implications, briefly walk us through them?
Well, basically, with respect to these items, these items represents estimates that management has made in the financial statements. And basically, we're disclosing that with respect to these numbers that are in the financial statement, they're based upon estimates by management. And we look at the reasonableness of these estimates and make sure that we're in agreement with them in order to be able to issue the opinion on the financial statements. So these, I believe it's eight items.
Yes.
It's eight items. These are items that there aren't a definitive number, that they have to be based upon a process of coming up with the estimated amount of these items.
And how reasonable did you think our assumptions were, and what did you base that on?
We based it on the various tests that we performed. For instance, when we looked at the pension and post-employment benefits, we looked at the actuarial table, the reports that was performed by actuaries. The same thing with respect to the workers' compensation liabilities, there's actuary reports on those. And we look at the reports and look at the assumptions underlying those reports. We look at the historical data that those assumptions was made upon, and audit that historical data to make sure that it was correct. And so our audit deals with looking at the various documents that went into the development of those estimates. And based upon our work, we believe that they were reasonable and made no adjustments to them.
Okay. And the last couple of questions on the MICLA audit item, what's the difference between current assets and non-current assets?
Basically, current assets are items that are effective within about a year's period of time, and non-current assets are items that extend out for a greater duration.
Gotcha. And is the MICLA audit something that we only do because of federal government requirements, or is there value in that knowledge to us internally?
We do it mainly because of the amount of MICLA that we have. We've got in excess of $1 billion worth of MICLA, and we have to include it in the city's financial statements. So this is the first step of getting the information.
But there's nothing that internally we see of great value, and that we do it because we need to as part of our reporting process in essence?
We may use it, and the CAO knows it better. We may use it for some of the information for bond raters and others. But it's not, it's not the same as the city's CAFR. But the information that we use in the MICLA statements, we also include in the city's financial statements.
Any other questions, Mr. Parks? I would suggest that we receive and file this report, but that we ask for the Controller to come back, I would say in a couple of weeks, to give us an idea about the lack of adequate funding to perform the audits on schedule and the implications of that. I think we'd like to look at that a little further and see if there are things that the city should be doing to consider other funding sources or adding funding from other general funded places to make sure that we don't wind up being far behind on these audits if they actually are going to harm the city in various ways. So if you could bring back that information at our next meeting in a couple of weeks, that would be greatly appreciated.
Could we have it for a month on that one?
If you need a month to do that, that's fine.
Yeah, because the other thing is, we are also working on a response to the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They want to change the mechanism of accounting for the city's financial statements and place a liability on our statement of net assets, which would take us from positive to significantly negative.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. If you could just make it the next meeting closest to a month or so from now, that would be great.
Thank you.
The one thing I'd also offer, the CAO is doing the first financial status report by the end of this month, first of next month. If we're talking about resources, that would be an ideal place for the Controller to also express themselves. If there's a need of revenue or if there are positions being held because of managed hiring, that would be something that would be a viable location.
That's part of it. The other issue is that right now, hiring is sort of a zero-sum game. We're not bringing people in from the outside. So we're basically, every department is taking people from somewhere else. And for example, aging now has a problem. The zoo has some issues. So that when people leave, they go to other departments, but we're not bringing people in from outside the city.
I know we're trying to do that, and everybody's trying to participate and be as helpful as they can. But if this is really going to screw up a city process, I think we need to encourage you not to be team players as much to the detriment, long-term, of the city, but to actually let us know if we really are shooting ourselves in the foot by not providing enough resources. You know, we know you didn't bring that up, but we're asking you to give us that information.
I think one of the things is that we've met with the CLA recently and the CAO, unless it's a e-rip position, then they will be looking at it in the sense of whether it's a revenue-producing position and evaluating as to that whole issue for managed hiring. So that's also would be important if that information is in the FSR so it can be, as each department's concerns are documented before it comes to the Council.
And from my point of view, I don't know if everybody's on the same page, but I would hope they are. A revenue loss avoiding position, for me, is the same as a revenue generating position. So if we need a position to avoid losing money because of certain violations, I would like to see us move in that direction as well, so we don't do stupid things and undercut ourselves, where we cut two staff people and lose enough money to have paid for 10. And my fear is that that's the case. So as best as you can document the potential losses to the city as part of this, that would be certainly helpful to me. And so that's the direction. I don't think we have any speakers under general public comments. So we are adjourned.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time.